Hello, Jason, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, it sounds actually really clear in here. This is nice.
Great. So we can get started whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay, great. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we start with our roll call, Jason?
Council President McIrvin. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the excuse the absent council member.
Second.
And it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. So we're gonna start off tonight with a proclamation, and it is Building Safety Month.
My proclamation, whereas City of Renton is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure, both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildlife, or wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action", the theme of Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable housing buildings. And whereas we acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be a Building Safety Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in the special observance and witness whereof. I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed the second day of May 2022. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move the proclamation to get up.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight we have our own Rob Shuey to accept the proclamation. Good evening, Rob.
Hi, guys. Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the proclamation. I really appreciate it. I'm Rob Shuey, building official for the City of Renton. You know, Building Safety Month is an international program that takes place every May to raise awareness about building safety, and it celebrates the advances in constructing safe, sustainable, affordable, and resilient buildings and homes. This campaign reinforces the need for the adoption of modern. Building Safety Month because we understand the need for safe and sustainable structures where we live, work, and play. All communities need building codes to protect their citizens from disasters like weather-related events, structure collapse, fires. Building codes are society's best way of protecting our homes, offices, schools, manufacturing facilities, stores, and gathering places. Our building department works hard every day to keep the public safe for our citizens and public. And I want to thank you all very much for your time.
Great, thank you, Rob. Yes, lots of lives have been saved through building inspections and the increase in safety in our buildings. So, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have an administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. The Renton Multicultural Festival returns to a two-day in-person event. Join us Friday, May 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Renton Civic Theater, 507 South Third Street, and Saturday, May 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Renton Pavilion Event Center at 233 Burnett Avenue South. Enjoy live performances of cultural music and dance, traditional crafts, and local artist displays. The festival's fashion show is Saturday at 2:30 p.m. Food trucks will also be in attendance, and maps will help you navigate your way to visit some of downtown Renton's fabulous restaurants and businesses. For more information and a soon-to-be-released performance schedule, please visit rentonwa.gov/festival. In partnership with Republic Services and Styro Recycle, Solid Waste Utility Division will host the first of three mini-recycle events on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, at 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Renton Technical College. Materials collected will be scrap metal, including large appliances, polystyrene or styrofoam, and bubble wrap. Food donations will also be collected for the Renton Salvation Army Food Bank. For more information, please visit Renton Mini Recycle Events. On Saturday, May 7th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., join the Renton Police Department and Mercer Island Marine Patrol to learn about water safety. The event will be at Gene Coolon Memorial Beach Park at 1201 Lake Washington Boulevard North. There will be courtesy vessel inspection, safety tips, giveaways, games, and more. Negotiations with Republic Services for customer credits resulting from the missed collection of garbage during the January labor disruption have concluded. Single-family residential customers who experienced missed garbage collection will receive a credit with their second quarter billing. Multi-family and commercial customers who experienced missed garbage collection will receive a credit for each garbage container not collected with their April billing. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects, or weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. There's your report, sir.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. Five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by a city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt speaker up. You've been unmuted. This is the speaker's queue, that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city residence, and the topic you're addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish your comments when you see the timer is close to expiring.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Due to the volume of speakers that we have tonight, I move that we move audience comments to two minutes each.
Second. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince and second by Councilmember Perez that audience comment period be reduced to two minutes per speaker tonight in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay, actually, nay.
Okay, it's four-two. Okay, the ayes have it. So, tonight's audience comment period will be two minutes. And do we have our first speaker?
Mr. Mayor, we have 26 speakers tonight.
Okay.
The first person is Maureen Farley. However, I don't see Maureen here. The next person is Gina Carey. Gina, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great, okay. I am really excited about the work the Planning Commission has accomplished. I'm an animal advocate and Renton resident voter. My name is Gina Carey. What a journey we've been on. I've learned so much. I've learned how to Zoom, and I've learned about puppy mills, and I've gotten involved. I look back at my testimonies, and I spoke about the following. It is disgraceful that people are making a profit off of the production of puppies, not in my backyard. Let's do the right thing. Retail pet sale regulations versus a humane ordinance. Let's pass a humane ordinance. How much is that puppy in the window? These are exciting times for cats and dogs. Thanks for hearing my cry. Thanks for all the hard work. Now we're getting close to finalizing a new humane ordinance. I applaud all the effort that has gone into this. I appreciate all the work that went into defining a puppy mill puppy. I appreciate you requiring price and breeder information on cages and online. I appreciate the elimination of non-disclosure clause. I appreciate lack of enforcement could result in loss of business license or charges of a misdemeanor. I appreciate the work that went into creating the affidavit and defining the supporting documentation. Well, all that is left is figuring out the arbitrary date of when to make it effective. I'm still advocating for an independent state for puppies and hope you will consider 4th July 2022. I know that's asking a lot, but whatever the date, I hope you choose the soonest possible date. While I still believe puppy land needs to step up and pay their share of the safety net to protect dogs that fall through the cracks, I know that is also asking a lot and may be something to consider a later date. In the meantime, I just want to thank the Planning Commission for a job well done. Thank you. I made it.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Nicola Robinson. However, I don't see Nicola here. The next person is Diane Dobson. Diane, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Diane Dobson. I am both a resident of Renton and an employee within Renton, and I come to you tonight in my capacity as CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce and on behalf of the business community. I come to the city, the council, and the administration tonight to express my sincere gratitude. This past weekend, we had our Renton Chamber Spring Fling and Auction, and it was our first major event back since our holiday gala in December of 2019. And let me tell you what a wonderful event. A sold-out event catered by Rain City Catering with a dessert dash, sponsored by over 20 bakeries and small businesses, a live and silent auction, decorations and ambience created by Kujini Florists that transformed the event space into a world away, and music and dancing, and it was made all the better by the overwhelming support of the City of Renton Council and Administration. Aside from the amazing support you all showed for the auction process itself, the amount of people that we had show up for the event added to the energy and enthusiasm of the evening itself. Your presence, your support, your excitement could be felt by all of the attendees in the room, and businesses of all sizes saw you engaged and felt that support, and it truly was a magical evening. And so I come to you with a sincere and appreciation for what you all contributed to make our night an overwhelming success for the business community that has sustained so much over the last two years. And I just thank you that we were able to share that time to come together to recognize the challenges that we've overcome over the past two years and to look forward collectively with hope for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. It was actually wonderful. I know a lot of the council members were able to attend, and I do agree that Kujini Florists did an amazing job transforming the room. So, yes, thank you.
You might be muted, Judith.
I think you're muted.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Bob Baker. Bob, go ahead.
Bob, if you're trying to speak, you're muted. We cannot hear you.
Bob, are you there?
If we can come back to Bob.
Definitely. The next person we have is Kathleen Baker. Kathleen, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fabulous. I'll have Bob use my laptop here. So my friends and neighbors will, I'm here to talk about the asphalt plant. My friends and neighbors will talk about the horrible effects the asphalt plant will have if it's built. It's Public Service Recognition Week. As a public servant myself for over 25-plus years, I'm going to take a moment to thank all of you for your public service. Being a public servant can be a thankless job, but it can be a rewarding job. We're called to be of service to our citizens and our neighbors. We are called to be the face of government. What does this have regarding the proposed asphalt plant? The plant threatens the health of the river, the salmon, the river that is a vital part of the City of Renton's identity. Increased truck traffic. As we have all seen, what a dump truck accident looked like on 156. Lakesides negotiated, they would not use 156. But does that include subcontractors and customers that are going to get asphalt? I don't believe they have control over those trucks. I plead to you to take action against the asphalt plant. Pressure King County to get an EIS. Pressure your mayor, your city attorney, to take action. I'm not asking you to do the easy thing. I'm asking you to do the right thing as public servants, to rise to the trust of the citizens that have elected you. What is the right thing? Again, demanding an EIS. And I'd like to thank you with my last 20 seconds again for choosing to be a public servant and that your work is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words.
We can go back to Bob Baker. Bob, go ahead. Bob, are you there? We will come back to you. The next person is Javier Ceballos. Javier, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to convey to you all my firm opposition to the building of the proposed asphalt plant by Lakeside Industries. I'd like to know what the mayor's office and the council has done to prevent it and what it will continue to do to stop it from going forward. I understand the potential location for the plant is considered unincorporated Renton. I also understand that the permitting wasn't granted by King County City Council or the Renton City Council, but rather by someone named Ty Peterson from the Department of Local Services in Snoqualmie. Most likely, someone who's out of touch with Renton and the needs of the people who live here. I question the integrity of someone capable of making such a decision, knowing the consequences it carries. It would be easy to say this is out of the hands of the council and just point a finger. This was my experience when I reached out to the Melling Distribution List of the King County Council. Of all nine district offices, I only heard back from that of Councilmember Dunn. His staffer expressed his opposition, but it mostly has gone unheard. I also reached out to Cedar River Water and Sewer or Water Provider, and they expressed zero interest in getting involved since they will not serve that parcel. Either way, I'd like to know, expect more from this council, hope to see endless efforts to stop this any cost. Issue should be like the top of everybody's list at the moment. So, yes, I've been reading the permitting department rule that the decision would not pose significant adverse impacts as long as the company takes certain mitigation measures, but this is an absurd conclusion to arrive at. It takes one mistake, one irresponsible employee to cause irreparable damage to the environment, wildlife, and our water supply. I wish not to worry about toxicity in the air that can cause respiratory problems and other diseases. Please put yourself in our shoes and imagine the asphalt plant being built directly next to your home. Don't allow somebody out of touch like Mr. Peterson to decide on a short economic decision that will impact the livelihood of thousands of residents and the quality of water for millions of people, for over a million people. Thank you for listening.
The next person we have is Patrice DeBake. However, I don't see Patrice here. The next person is Stephanie Brown. Stephanie, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Renton City Council. I am here to speak about the asphalt plant in strong opposition. I am a Renton resident in the Briarwood area, and I use 169 on a regular basis, both out to Maple Valley and to other parts of Renton. But I found a comment from Ike Keelglass to be very representative of some of the issues at stake. And so I'm going to be reading a statement directly from him that he expressed in the Seattle Times opinion column. So in his words, "Let me begin by stating that I am not opposed to asphalt. As retired, as a retired Union 302 and property developer, asphalt is an essential building material and important component of our country's infrastructure. I worked on the Alaska Pipeline project in the 70s and for its entire duration, constructing the James W. Dalton Highway, a 414-mile supply road that transported the Trans-Alaska Pipeline system. My work on the AK Pipeline project afforded me the opportunity to buy a home and property in Renton. The home I still live in, over 41 years later, my home is now subject to the possibility of being within 500 feet of an asphalt recycling and hot-mix plant. It's noise and toxic emissions. Locally, I worked on the 405-167 interchange in the 80s and various bridges and redways in the region. I know firsthand that asphalt fumes are nasty. I was also a developer 20 years ago and worked on a project for 20 residential units in Maple Valley. I had to do an EIS, environmental impact statement, for a property that was already zoned for residential and contained no sensitive areas. How in the world can an industrial site get by without one, let alone one within 150 feet of a salmon habitat? The fact that the county is not requiring an EIS for the Lakeside Industries asphalt plant is astounding. The basic point, this plant does not belong within a stone's throw of the Cedar River in one direction and residential homes in the other." Again, this is the statement that was shared by Ike Keelglass, Hillgaff, sorry, in the Seattle Times, and I thought it represented many of the points that a lot of residents are concerned about. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Michelle Juckus. Michelle, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Others will probably say it better than I can, but I just wanted to be here tonight to have you know, I just wanted to go on record as being vehemently opposed to the Lakeside plan. It's, to me, environmentally irresponsible to have an industrial site of this scale in such an eco-sensitive space for the fish, for water quality, for public health. I can smell the sour smells from Cedar Grove composting, which is only several miles, it's several miles away from my home as the crow flies. I can't even imagine being within 500 feet of this industrial site with the risk of fire and other negative impacts. This is heavy industry, and it doesn't belong, it doesn't belong in that space. I'm also, I was also reading the King County Comprehensive Plan, and I wanted to call attention to Chapter 5, Page 26 of that plan, where it's "King County's Stated Goal to Conserve Fish and Wildlife Resources in the County" to, I'm reading just excerpts, "to identify and protect fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. In areas outside the urban growth area, the county should strive to maintain and recover ecological processes," I'm still reading here, "native landscapes, ecosystems, and habitats that can support viable populations of native species. This should be accomplished through coordinated conservation, planning, and collaborative implementation." I don't see the plan by Lakeside in accordance with our own King County goals, and I ask you respectfully and passionately to please oppose this permission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Brian Domin. However, I don't see Brian in attendance tonight. The next person is Natalie Cohen. Natalie, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Thank you for taking the opportunity. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you about this atrocity of the proposed asphalt plant by Lakeside Industries. I'm sure you already know where it is, but please do not let this go through, not so close to our Cedar River. I realize that you are not, I realize the site is not in the City of Renton, but it will definitely have an impact on Renton and neighboring areas. The City of Renton gets its clean drinking water from the Cedar River, as does 2/3 of King County, including Seattle. It will only take one time for the asphalt plant to have an uncontained spill for the water to be contaminated. And regardless of what anyone at Lakeside says, it will happen. What then? The Renton River Day celebration is all about the Cedar River. The river is right there. The library spans the Cedar River with a wonderful view of the water. When the river gets polluted, what then? Traffic is already a mess on 169. Adding more heavy trucks to an already taxed roadway is asking for trouble. In the last 10 years, it takes three times as long to go from Jones Road to the intersection of 169 and 405. What happens when a chunk of asphalt or tar flies into the windshield of another car? Air quality. What will happen when the toxic fumes enter the atmosphere? Where will that stench go? We cannot have that in our neighborhood or any residential area. The plant needs to be somewhere far away from homes and certainly not 150 feet from the Cedar River. And I will finish by stating that over $1 billion, that's billion dollars, have been spent on restoring the fish and native habitat. Not just the fish, the deer, the eagles, the hawks, the beavers, the ducks, the geese. I can go on and on. Lakeside just needs to find another place to build its asphalt plant. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Tammy Bernato. Tammy, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a resident of the Renton area. I grew up on the Maple Valley area. I lived on the Cedar River. My folks bought property there in the 60s. I moved away, and when I had the opportunity, after my husband did 20 years in the military, I wanted to come back and be as close to the river as I could get. I live up in Fairwood, so I'm not far from where this asphalt plant is going in. And to me, it is mind-boggling that this city, this state, would allow an asphalt plant to come in and be that close to the Cedar River. That river is a prize of our area. Not only does it provide water for 1.3 million people, but people swim in that river. The eagles, the deer, we have lots of wildlife that depend on that river. And to have an asphalt plant that can go almost anywhere besides 150 feet away from the river is, like I said, mind-boggling. The traffic issues. My husband uses 169 on a daily basis. I don't know how many times he texts me that he's stuck in an accident that has happened. Lakeside has told us that there'll be up to 600 trucks traveling daily on the Maple Valley Highway. It's an accident waiting to happen. I just, it just blows me away, and I don't understand why no environmental impact statement. I can't pound a nail and put up a shed without somebody wanting me to meet code, and you guys have a plant going in, and you're not having an environmental statement done. This is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Stuart Drummond. Stuart, go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council members. My name is Stuart Drummond. I currently live in Renton. I wanted to take a little bit of your time to speak about my opposition against the new Lakeside asphalt plant. Other commenters tonight have been able to give you a lot of potential impact about it, about the impact of this plant, but I wanted to give you a bit of my personal anecdote about my experience being introduced to this community. I just moved to Renton last year after spending a frankly arduous experience of purchasing a home in Washington and was able to find a house in a community that I'm so very excited about, right on the Maple Valley Highway. However, I was then very disheartened to hear about the permit approval from the King County Council for the permit. Considering that the plant is within two miles away from my home and the potential environmental impact and the air quality impact to the Cedar River and my new neighbors, I support any, I would appreciate any support or pressure that we can receive from the City of Renton towards this permitting. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Julia Wilder. Julia, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. This is my first time trying this. I am against the asphalt plant for a number of reasons. I live on Maple Valley at Wonderland Estates and right next to the highway. So I get the smells from Cedar Grove, which send me back inside to get my inhaler. I am very concerned about the asphalt then also going in, which would affect my ability to breathe. The, so the smells are one issue, the pollution that comes from the additional traffic. Our home is right next to the highway. And so every morning I have to dust off the top of my coffee pot from the fine dust that comes in off the highway. And I would really love to see some mitigation in regards to that. Having some kind of a barrier between our development and the highway. And then the decibels, since we've lived there the last two years, the trucks that go flying by, if they're empty and they're heading back to their home place, I don't know where it is. They actually achieve air as they go driving through Maple Valley, right in front of Ron Regis Park. And it's very hard to sleep through. It's jarring when you're in the house and you can feel all of it. It's like having an earthquake full-time. We're also experiencing a lot of the ponding. The water actually comes up into our driveway. And I'm afraid that the additional things that are happening are going to destroy the system that was put into place to help mitigate that. I watched your team actually move fish one day. I had no idea that that was something that had to be done twice a year. And it just concerns me that the additional asphalt plant will cause more problems for the fish. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Dutch Deitchman. Dutch, go ahead.
Okay, I found the unmute. Hello, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, super. Yeah, I live in unincorporated King County Renton address nine eight zero five eight for the past forty-five years, same, same home. And I experience almost on a daily basis the smells and stenches of the land between the landfill and Cedar Grove Road. And I'm not looking forward to an asphalt plant down the hill from me. I was looking at, reading the editorial in the Seattle Times and I picked out a small paragraph out of it. That was from yesterday, Seattle Times. I'm sure most of you have read it. It says, "The plant's opponents should continue to demand stringent environmental review." That's an EIS of which I have been a proponent of since I was a council member under Greater Maple Valley Unincorporated Area Council. I brought this to the council back in twenty seventeen, even invited the county and Lakeside to our meetings where they gave us presentations. We have opposed it. I'm no longer in that council, but I do serve in the environmental committee. And without an EIS, I mean, I don't see how this could have ever gone forward whatsoever. It's crazy. So, we're looking for your support as, as almost residents of Renton. And I thank you for allowing me to give you my comments. Have a great evening.
The next person we have is Kim Peterson. Kim, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kim Peterson and I live in Renton, in the Renton Highlands. And I was just reminded of the, the the asphalt plant thing today and just wanted to listen in and see how it was going. And also just say that I agree with what has been said so well by many others just prior to me. And just really concerned for the Cedar River, which, you know, contributes, I think it even goes out to Puget Sound and can affect the whales and all of that is just like really disconcerting that we would hurt the fish and the whales and stuff that we've been working so hard to protect. And I just wanted to see what's going on and be another voice in, in that fight for helping the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we have is William Young. However, I don't see William in attendance tonight. The next person is Kirsty Ritalati. Kirsty, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Kirsty Ritalati. I live up in the Fairwood neighborhood in Renton. I have a PhD in microbiology and I've worked in groundwater bio remediation for twenty years. And I almost flipped out of my chair when I saw that there's an asphalt plant going in down on Maple Valley Highway. And that somehow no environmental assessment had to be done in order to put this in. And having an asphalt plant down in that expanding residential community, it's growing non-stop, all the time, more and more communities going in. And it's surrounded by these wonderful natural resource passageways and the Red Cedar River. It is absolutely irresponsible stewardship by King County to allow an asphalt plant to go into this valley. It already, you know, it's a, it's a trap for fog. I mean, imagine what it's going to do to trapping particulate matter from an asphalt plant. This is going to be terrible for anybody who has any amount of asthma, such as myself, living in that area. On top of that, I tried to find other kind of research on the asphalt plants. And all I could find was this Asphalt Production Policy Health Impact Assessment by Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. And basically, this says that you have to do an environmental assessment before you can permit a land for that kind of use. And furthermore, there can be no asphalt plants in a flood zone. So with an environmental impact statement done today, I mean, maybe in two thousand and eight when it was zoned, this was not a flood zone. But it is a flood zone perhaps today with global warming, we have to take that into account. So I just wanted to say, I can't believe this is going, I have very firm opposition to an asphalt plant on Maple Valley, especially considering the changing nature of the climate and our land use. We have to thoroughly reevaluate its rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Hugh Brown. Hugh, go ahead.
Thank you for putting me on the program. Like many of the speakers before me, I think that the Lakeside Asphalt Plant is a disaster in the making. Like one of the previous speakers, I also have a PhD, mine's in soil management. And I hope that other speaker gets in touch with me so that we can collaborate on this. I could spend two hours talking about the potential hazards, but since I only have the two minutes, let me just highlight one. And that is, all of the air pollutants from the asphalt plant will go into the watershed eventually. They'll be deposited as either wet or dry deposition that gets into the river. And once it's in the river, it will have a hugely negative impact on salmon and lots of other wildlife. I think the previous speakers have really summarized the objections to the plant. So let me pose a question to the council. And that is, do you oppose the plant too? And if you do, will you also be suing King County over the permits that have been issued? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person we have is John Fisher. John, go ahead. John, are you there? John, we can come back to you. The next person we have is Sue Edwards. Sue, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, thank you for letting me speak. I did not prepare a speech, but I just have a couple of comments. Fifty or a hundred years from now, if the river has been tainted and if like, since the river is the major source of water to Lake Washington, so if the river and Lake Washington are polluted by the, an accident that happens at the Lakeside Industry Site, historians are going to look back at the city of Renton's action taken to avoid having this accident happen. And historians are going to say, what did the city of Renton do to prevent such an occurrence? And I would hope that an accident doesn't happen. I would hope that the plant does not go in, so we don't have to worry about it. But I would like to ask you guys to take some action to show your opposition to this plant, to protect your citizens and to protect your river that goes through your city before it goes to Lake Washington. And one of the actions you can take is to appeal the granting of the permit. Or you can support the group that is also appealing it. And help us, help us appeal that permit and help us try to get an EIS. It's ridiculous that there's no EIS required for an asphalt plant on the Cedar River. But anyway, I'm hoping that historians will be able to look at what the city of Renton did to protect the city of Renton from such an occurrence. And thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Judy Bonthuis. However, I don't see Judy in attendance tonight. The next person is Phyllis Moss. Phyllis, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I am a citizen of Renton and moved down here from unincorporated Bathville. So I'm very familiar with EISs and building homes and such. But I'm very concerned about the proposed plant, asphalt plant, and what it could potentially do to the Cedar River and the impact it will have on an already busy Highway one sixty-nine. I live at Maplewood Glen, which is right at the S-Curve entrance onto four oh five. And, you know, at this point, backup on one sixty-nine starts at five forty in the morning and it's not done until nine AM. Only knowing that because I'm a retired nurse. So I'm also looking at it from a standpoint from health that as the trucks, as the automobiles sit on one sixty-nine idling, all that pollution is going into the air. And not only that, but the pollutants that will be admitted into the air from the plant will be into the river and literally killing the aquatic life of our river. Our folks have said it very, very strongly and with real conviction that our river is important to us as well as our wildlife and our living conditions. And I just have a question of, how did you grant this? How did this permit get granted? And why is it that the articles in the paper are only stating Lakeside's propositions? And their fight, but no fight at all from the city of Renton? And I'm very disappointed in that. And though I am willing to do what I can do to help mitigate, get the EIS and let's get the health concerns and the environmental concerns a better look. And thank you for listening to me and all your hard work.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Devon Johnson. Devon, go ahead. Stefan, are you there?
Wait, he's muted.
Stefan, are you muted?
Stefan, we're going to have to come back to you. We can, we are going, I'll go back to the two others that we were having technical difficulties. Hopefully, we can get them on now. For Bob Baker. Bob, are you there? Bob? Nope. Let's try John Fisher. John, are you there? John, I see you've unmuted. Mr. Mayor, I don't think we can get Bob Baker or John Fisher to address council tonight.
Okay, and then did?
Let's try Stefan Johnson again.
And did we, did Nicola show up?
No, I don't see her here.
Okay.
Stefan, are you there? I do see Nikki Robinson, I do see Nicola Robinson here.
Okay, perfect.
Where did she go? Oh, here we go. Nicola, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Renton Council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I've sent a letter already documenting all these, this information that I'm going to regurgitate and also the links to this information. So I'll start with, in July of twenty twenty-one, a Tesla Megapack, part of a giant battery project in Victoria, Australia, caught on fire, creating a blaze that was almost impossible to control. The installation of the new battery packs was just completed and the system was undergoing testing when one of the Megapacks caught on fire. However, in this case, the bigger issue was toxic fumes emanating from the burning Megapack. Remember, this is only July twenty twenty-one. The authorities issued a toxic quality warning for various areas around due to the fire. Secondly, the Moss Landing Energy Storage Facility in California, the world's largest lithium-ion battery, is down again. The impacted facility went online December twenty twenty. In September of twenty twenty-one, less than a year after it ended its service, the Moss Landing Energy Storage Facility was first offline on September the fourth when an unexpected, unspecified number of batteries overheated. Moss Landing Phase One has been offline since that date. A release was given out by Vistra stating a software programming error in a heating suppression system caused the incident that damaged the batteries. In February sixteen twenty twenty-two, the energy storage facility set off fire alarms in April, this is all in twenty twenty-two. February the sixteenth twenty twenty-two, April the twenty-sixth twenty twenty- April the 26th, 2022. This is regarding the battery fire at the Salt River Project in Arizona. I know I have to summarize, but you know, to give us just two minutes at the beginning of the meeting, when we need at least three minutes. So in summary, because I don't know if you're going to give me just another 30 seconds to really emphasize the fact that issues are ongoing despite software monitoring programs that apparently have been put in place. And despite these alleged safety measures, since 2019, this technology is hazardous and the software is supposed to monitor the system is itself a safety issue. But the proposal and pre-application for a best installation 50 feet from our 140 household.
I'm going to have, I'm going to have you stop. You sent us this information and I know the council does have it. And we took action on this issue last week and with a moratorium on battery storages.
Well, that, that is true, but what is going to come out of the moratorium and the public hearing is unknown at this point. So it's very important for your staff and the departments to know about ongoing problems and issues regarding the hazard. This year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any others that? Like Bob Baker, I think he. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have, let's see. Brian Domon is here.
Okay.
Brian, go ahead.
Hi, can folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hey, I'm a homeowner. I recently bought a home in East Renton Highlands. Me and my significant other are in our twenties and we're thinking about starting a family. When we were looking for homes, a lot of people told us to stay away from Renton and we decided to kind of take a risk on the area. And I really feel like this is the type of thing that decreases long-term propositions for folks wanting to have their kids here and raise their families. This is really concerning to me that there hasn't been an environmental impact study. I know that this wasn't originally zoned as an industrial zone. I just, I think that it's really important that we make sure that there is an environmental impact study. That's all I have to say. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I guess Bob Baker is under Kathleen Baker.
I can double check. Kathleen, are you there?
Yep, can you hear us?
Yes, is Bob there?
I'm here. Thank you so much for getting me. My phone was not cooperating. My name is Bob Baker and I'm talking about the asphalt plant. And I understand that it is in unincorporated King County, not inside the city limits of Renton. But I would like to explain to some folks how it does affect the city of Renton. As we've already talked about traffic, pollutants, the contamination of the river, et cetera, but also the fire. Asphalt plants are very susceptible to fires. And because we're on a, the plant will be in unincorporated King County. They have insufficient fire systems and departments to take care of it. So that would rely on the city of Renton and possibly the city of Maple Valley to fight the fires. Also, the pollutants that do get into the river will choke out the river and eventually kill it. There is three streams that belong on that site that do go into the Cedar River. I have fished the Cedar River and floated the Cedar River since I was a little boy. And I hate to see this actually die out. What can the city of Renton do? Well, you can demand an EIS. You can also appeal the decisions from King County permitting. And you'd have to look to permit the due date is the 5th, I believe, for all appeals to be made. I strongly ask that the city of Renton, because you are the steward of the river between unincorporated King County and Lake Washington. Basically, whether you like it or not, it falls upon our hands to take care of that river. So I ask once again that you step up and and do the right thing and take care of our river. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we got everybody that was signed up that was here. And is that correct? Yeah, okay, we're back. All right, well, that was a lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Hands are raised, are we?
She's handling that on her end.
I mean.
She's. Staff has got that under control, so she's working with them on that side. So I want to start off by saying thank you to all the speakers that took the time away from their family and loved ones and whatever else they do at night to come and express, express their concerns. And as far as concerns, I, we have not promoted or expressed it, but I can tell you that we are adamantly against the location of the asphalt plant there. The city has sent letters to King County expressing our concerns and asking for mitigation on it. I can also tell you that every council member in some way or form has reached out to the administration asking us about the situation. I would also encourage everyone that spoke tonight and anyone that's out there listening to this to reach out to King County. This is in their jurisdiction. It, there's, there's a reason why it was located in unincorporated King County. There's not a lot of cities that wouldn't want this allowed in their area. So reach out to King County and express your concerns about the locating of it. Our staff is still looking at it. Even as late as just before this meeting, we've asked the city attorney to take another look at it and see what, what options we do have as a municipality. So this is concerning to us. These issues that impact our environment and impact the quality of our life, we don't take them lightly, whether it's the battery pack or an asphalt plant or anything. We, we do take this seriously. And, and we want you to know that we take this seriously. And, and we're going to do everything we can to protect the community of Renton and the surrounding jurisdictions. So once again, thank you all for, for coming out tonight and giving us your, your concerns and expressing your concern. So. Yes. Council member.
Yeah, I would also like to just say that we have been opposing this for many, many years since the beginning of this process when original moratorium came from King County. We continue to oppose it. And we, to a man, are passionate, passionate about our environment, our fish, our ability to swim in the lake and traffic and air pollution. We oppose this project. Please, I encourage you, please call into King County and express your passion about this very, very disappointing decision. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. There are seven items for council consideration. Are there any that would, like people?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member.
I would like to pull item C, please.
Okay. Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus item C.
I con.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Press, that the council concur with the consent agenda minus item C in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. All right, motion carries.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item C, which is Agenda Bill 3115, relates to the annual waiver of fees for parking rental and permits for various city-sponsored events throughout the year. The, the total amount is less than $21,000, so I move that council concur with item C.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by council member, I'll holler in second by council member Press. If the council concur with item C in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one report.
Okay, Utilities Committee Committee Report. This is regarding the Agreement for Transfer of Water Service between the city of Renton and King County Water District Number 90. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement, the agreement for the transfer of water service for the properties described below from King County Water District Number 90 to the city of Renton. Number one is 4519 Northeast 10th Street, 4531 Northeast 10th Street, 4637 Northeast 10th Street, 1051 Shalane Avenue Northeast and 1155 Deval Avenue Northeast. The committee also recommends the waiver of the water system development charges of $22,500 since the properties will not gain additional benefit from the transfer of water service. And the committee further recommends that their resolution regarding this matter be prevent, presented for reading and adoption.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alberton.
I move the council concur with the Utility, Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberton, second by Councilmember Halloran, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Reports in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Press.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're on to legislation. We have one resolution and one ordinance for final reading.
Hey, this resolution is regarding that transfer of water services mentioned previously. Resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement between the city of Renton and King County Water District Number 90 for the transfer of five domestic water services from the district to the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alberton.
I move the Resolution, Resolution P, I can't say it tonight, Resolution P adopted.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Alberton, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. All right, motion carries.
All right, the ordinance. At first reading last week is up for second and final reading tonight. It's regarding the Planning Commission Membership Requirements. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 210 5A of the Rent Municipal Code by allowing owners of a small business in the city of Renton to be members of the Planning Commission, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to adopt this way.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Alberton, that the council adopt the ordinance as read. In discussion. This requires roll call.
Okay, councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Alberton. Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries. We are on to new business. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, May the 9th at 4:00 p.m., the Finance Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the Port of Seattle's Economic Development Support Program Grant. And the second is vouchers. And that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's my.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see what the city can do in response to possibly appealing the permit granted by King County for the asphalt plant. And if we cannot appeal the permit, to find some way to make a public statement on behalf of the council and the mayor's office to express our disdain for the asphalt plant being built within such close proximity to our river as well as to residences.
Is that a, are you, is that a motion or is that something you want to move to have the administration?
A motion, sir.
Second.
Okay.
Motion for, for us to appeal the asphalt plant.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, um, we have a hand raised, but of course we have to vote on the motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Press.
I just want clarification. Is this a motion to ask administration to research or do, or, or check with administration again about what is the proper action? Or this is a motion to already make a declaration, formal declaration against the plant? I, I just, I'm asking a question for clarification. I didn't understand the motion.
So I heard it as moved to the administration to evaluate the the possibility of appealing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, both on the floor, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. Let's go out the floor. Okay.
That's it?
All right, Councilmember Alberton.
Thank you.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Van.
I don't have any committee meeting coming up, but I do want to take this opportunity in thanking our community members for coming out and speaking and letting council members and city know your situation and perspective. And I encourage you to continue to speak up and letting other elected officials in King County to know. But in, in regarding to the appeals, my, I would like to have a motion in terms of reflecting on what we've said, sending in solidarity with the community. So I motion that to council concur with a statement to stand against the asphalt plant.
Second.
Okay, so that you want to have a motion to stand with the community against the asphalt plant?
Yes.
A formal statement?
Yes.
From the council?
Yes.
Okay. In your discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Press.
Just for clarification, this motion is just clarified. Is this a letter that is going to be signed by the president of the council? Or this is a letter requested by, signed by the mayor?
This, the way I understood it is this was a declaration from the council.
So it's going to be signed by the president of the council?
That's the way I understood it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other clarification? No?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to ask the member what, what specific points would she would like to see included?
I think specifically what was mentioned here, that we have basically support the community and making sure that we, you know, we don't agree to the permitting process. It's just not known to the community. I think perhaps in the past, like you've mentioned earlier, Councilmember Halloran, that there were comments made, so years passed. But it's now the relevant time is that the permit has been granted. So we have to make sure that the community understands that. And I think that's really important for a community to know.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, all in favor.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry, I have another question. Who, to, to, this is a letter that we are going to send to, to a committee organization, to the county, or is just to publicly put it where? That's for me, it has not been clear. This declaration. This declaration.
Councilmember Van.
Yeah, so in any, you know, statement that we put out as council, I know we rarely do that as council. If the city choose to do one as well, but oftentimes, any statement that is written or made is on the website, is letting our community members know. Certainly, we can have other means as far as sending it to the county, however it is, right? That we usually do the, the normal process when we make a statement.
May I have a following question?
Yes, councilmember Perez.
Is this, is this declaration will be drafted by our staff? Which, we just have one staff and the president? Or is going to be referred for the administration to draft it?
Well, whatever the normal process is, right? And the normal process has been that when we do proclamation or a statement, we would get the support of the city staff. If it is our staff that can do it, our only staff, I think that would be good as well. I'm not thinking about the process. I think what is the normal process that we've been doing in terms of statements and proclamations? And that's the process we'll be using.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, councilmember Albertson.
I apologize, I'm, I need more clarification, I'm a little confused. Is this, is this a statement essentially to the community establishing the position of the council? That's, that's, that's the last thing. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Albertson.
So this is not a proclamation?
No, that's, well, no, it's not.
I said a statement. Yeah.
Not a proclamation.
Yeah. So.
Position statement.
Would not include, it would not involve staff if it's just a statement, council, correct?
It includes council staff.
Correct. But not, okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was asking. Because it's just a statement for the council, that normally doesn't involve administration. I just want to make sure that the direction is very clear and to make sure that the person that is going to review the final draft on behalf of all of us is going to be the president of the council, that that is the, the, the direction that we're, we're giving right now.
Proper.
That's the process, yes.
And thank you very much. Thank you.
And that council will have an opportunity to review the statement prior to that signature.
Of course.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Back up, councilmember Van, did you, do you have, did you say no new business?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And then councilmember Perez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. On Monday, May 9th, 2022, the Planning Development Committee will be meeting via video conference. We have three items on the agenda, retail pet sales, document seventeen briefing, emerging issues in CEB. And for council president McGurk, who's out tonight, the whole meeting is canceled. And we have our council meeting at 7:00 PM. And by video. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's wish the council.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Perez, second by councilmember Halloran, that we adjourn. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Stick around, say nay. All right, we adjourned. Thank you all.